Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council meeting this evening. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, November 4th, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the town's cable information channel 1301. And will also be available for viewing on the town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Carons.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Nathan Gregg from Zion Lutheran Church. If you would, please come forward, offer invocation for tonight's meeting. Welcome, and thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mayor McDougall. Yesterday, many Christian churches commemorated the best of all saints, where we remember and gave thanks to those we know who have died during the last year. And so tonight, as part of our invitation, I want to invite us to share a moment of silence as we remember those we know and love who we have lost. O God, the generations rise and pass away before you. You give strength to all who labor. You give rest to all when strength fails. Today, we remember all who lived as companions with us in our journey, and who have reached the end of their life. We thank you for our family, our forbears in faith, and those who built the foundations of this meeting. Teach us to embody the best of their lives of service, sacrifice, and love. And give us comfort, O Lord, as we may find peace and hope even in our sorrow. Now, O God, grant your grace and purpose on this town council meeting. Guide the conversations and decisions this night. Give our leaders vision, concern for the well-being of others, and the spirit of cooperation. Direct us all in that which we do, with your most gracious favor. Further us with your continual power. That in all our works, begun, continued, and ended in you, we may give you glory, experience the joy of work there. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Gregg, thank you very much for being with us, and thank you for what you do in our community. Thank you. Big Joe, at this time, if you would, send your son up here. We'd like to have him lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. If you would, please come forward to the microphone.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Those are Boy Scouts from Boy Scout Troop 507 here at Lexington United Methodist Church. I think I met y'all over there not too long ago. We had a nice talk with you guys. Thank y'all for being with us tonight. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session for this evening. This evening, we had three legal issues. One was advice regarding appointments to nonprofit foundations. We also had an update and advice regarding litigation, and we had advice regarding agenda items. We had two contractual issues. They were two downtown economic development issues. And we had one personnel item. It was an update regarding personnel information. No vote was taken at tonight's executive session. Is there a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So moved.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Ms. Manis seconds a motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Raise your unanimous. Dealing with the agenda this evening, are there any deletions off of the agenda for tonight? Anyone have anything they'd like to pull off the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move right into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes from the council work session on September 16 and council meeting October 7, 2019 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to council work session September 16 and regular council meeting October 7, 2019? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle seconds a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those minutes are approved. At this time, we will move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Kathy Manis, a proclamation commending Jenna Shevcek. Councilmember Manis.
Can we show the video before?
Absolutely, please.
My grandma died from cancer one year, so I decided that I should give all the money that I make to kids with cancer.
So tell us about some of the people you've given money to.
Well, I've given money to Miss Toni. She has cancer right now. Then I've also given money to Children's Chance.
And what about on the boat?
My chemo, my society.
And when making your earrings, is there anything special? Are those Gigi Jewelry earrings you're wearing?
They're one of a kind.
One of a kind?
Mm-hmm. Just like you.
Just like you. And what is saying for Gigi's earrings?
Made by hand created from heart. Okay, so monitor Shevcek on the operator and head coordinator Gigi's jewelry. There's Gigi. Hi, everybody. There's Gigi Shevcek. We're getting ready to do a function called Gigi's Jewelry. We're starting in '09, and we're about to go do a function on a cruise ship. And there's the star. Cancer is a terrible disease that kills many people, so I want to cure that cancer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am honored to read this proclamation for this one-of-a-kind young lady. It's a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, commending Jenna Gigi Shevcek. Whereas Jenna Shevcek is a resident of Lexington, South Carolina, and a senior at Ben Lipid School, where she was a cheerleader, and whereas she became the first junior founder of the Lexington Medical Center Foundation, and was elected to serve in this prestigious Lexington Medical Center Partners Program, and whereas Jenna received the Best of Philanthropy Award as a community champion by the Central Carolina Community Foundation and Columbia Metropolitan Magazine, and whereas she was first runner-up in the Farm Rich Kids Who Give Contest and received a lifetime membership with the Lexington Chamber of Commerce as a tribute to her giving back to the community, and whereas Jenna started Gigi's Jewelry in 2009 and has donated $10,000 to various families, charities, and hospitals. And she received the first-ever Community Spirit Award from Children's Chance for her donations from Gigi's Jewelry to support the fight against pediatric cancer. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council for the town of Lexington that Gigi Shevcek is hereby recognized and commended for her many achievements and has expressed best wishes in all her efforts as a representative of Ben Lipid School in Lexington, South Carolina, dated this fourth day of November, 2019. And there's a few of us up here who have watched you grow up, young lady, and we are very, very proud of what you have done and what you're going to do in the future. So if you'll meet me down here, I'll be glad to hand you this.
Jenna, the microphone is yours. If you'd like to share something with us, we'd love to hear from you.
Mayor McDougall, Mayor President, Ms. Manis, and members of council, I just wanted to make a statement in celebration. I would need to watch some of our company's work on our own, and I would like to see the area. I'm still on my phone.
Very good. Congratulations. Todd, Don, I know y'all are real proud.
No, well, you're proud too, huh?
Thank y'all for being with us. At this time, I will move into a vision plan update, the vision plan update for November 2019. The Ice House Amphitheater recently celebrated its third anniversary since 2016. We've held over 150 events there with 94,000 attendees. This past year, we held the most events yet at the Ice House Amphitheater with 55, with a total of 36,000 people attending this past year. The amphitheater continues to be a downtown staple for the town of Lexington and is a key component to our revitalization efforts on Main Street. The next event will be Movies in the Park at the amphitheater. You can come watch Toy Story 2 this Friday, November 8th at 6:00 PM. And then the next Movies in the Park will be Aladdin, and it will play Friday, November 22nd at 6:00 PM. On Saturday, November 23rd, we are teaming up with Mission Lexington to hold a Pack the Pantry event at the amphitheater. Come out and enjoy music and bring canned goods items that will help Lexington families in need. Moving on, last week, we held a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the town's new maintenance operation facility on Bruner Road. The new facility is composed of three buildings and its headquarters for the town's utilities department. The main office building has a training room, which allows adequate space for all staff to meet and train together. There is also two storage buildings, which allow for all equipment to be in, out of the rain and daily sunlight, and is also is home to several of our department's vehicles and so that they can be securely stored. Ultimately, the new headquarters allows the utilities department to have parts and equipment on hand so they can resolve problems more quickly. Each month, I announce some of the events going on in and around Lexington. All these events are a result of the town's vision plan, which was reviewed and renewed and updated in 2017, and again by this council this past summer. You can read the entire vision plan on the town's webpage. This council continues to look for ways every day to improve and preserve our community. We are always open to your ideas, so we invite you to please let us know if you think of something that will improve the quality of life for all citizens in the town of Lexington. That is the vision plan goal update for November 2019. At this time, I'll have a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Work will soon begin on a deceleration lane associated with the New Hampton Inn near Frank's Car Wash located on Sunset Boulevard, US 378. Please expect periodic lane shifts in this area. Sidewalk repair work is expected in the coming weeks at the entrance to Hobby Lobby on 378. There could be night or weekend lane closures associated with this work. More information will be provided on social media as it becomes available. The next traffic committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 13th at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room of Town Hall. If you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273 and let us know.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing for this evening is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-183, located at the 500 block of Old Cherokee Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5311-01-131, located at 324 Asa Rose Lane. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, finally, item number three, final reading of an ordinance for lease of parking spaces on town property. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. At this time, we will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-183, located in the 500 block of Old Cherokee Road. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. A&amp;T Custom Builders and Remodeling LLC owns 1.43 acres located at the 500 block of Old Cherokee Road and has petitioned to annex the property. The property is undeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential 2 and limited commercial. Old Cherokee Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their September meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning for the property and collector road classification for Old Cherokee Road. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds a motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carons.
If I may, I guess this would be for Mr. Hanson. Just looking at this, does this property, is it contiguous or adjacent to limited commercial? Looks like it's surrounded by residential.
I don't know why you sit in the back of the room.
You run, but you can't hide.
Directly across the street is a common area of residential property.
But just looking at the map, on either side of it is residential, correct?
Yes.
So is that, is that normal?
I guess it may be. Also, the property is a hard action, maybe you're not in town, whatever is developed on this parcel would have to comply by the property requirement.
So it's contiguous to town across the roadway with what's across the road. So they're kind of first ones in. And just to remind me, when, this is an annexation and we bring it in and a specific zoning, so is there, when is public notice made of that, like at that location?
At the location?
Yes, sir.
Public notice. And at the location.
We don't even post up a sign. It's when we rezone, it's when we post up a sign, correct? All right. Was there any, was there any discussion of this at Planning Commission?
There was. They debated back and forth. Pretty good bit about what was going on.
And was there any public comment there, or was it just amongst Planning Commission? Thank you. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
If I'm reading this correctly, this was an agenda item for the Planning Commission, correct? So I mean, they reviewed it. If there was an agenda item, I mean, there was opportunity for the public to speak on it, correct?
Yes, there was. And that's.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Raise your unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carons, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5311-01-131, located at 324 Asa Rose Lane. Councilmember Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. and Mrs. Tran own a parcel located at 324 Asa Rose Lane and have petitioned to annex the property. Single-family home is located on the site. Property is in town near this one or zone-protected residential 2. Asa Rose Lane is currently not classified, and River Falls Lane is classified as a RL4 road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during the October meeting and recommended protected residential 2 zoning for the property and RL4 road classification for the adjacent Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Carons makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, final reading of an ordinance for lease of parking spaces on town property. Councilmember Williams.
Town council has asked to grant authority to Town Administrator Britt Poole to enter into a lease with the proposed Main Street Hotel, parking spaces on town-owned property near the hotel. Pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, the details will be released once a contract is signed. I'll make a motion for final approval for Mr. Poole to enter the lease agreement and would ask that the contract be attached to the minutes online once it is.
Very good. Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor. Is there, am I getting some out? Yes, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, first reading to adopt the Town of Lexington Development Impact Fee Study, Housing Affordability Study, Capital Improvements Plan, and Development Impact Fee Ordinance. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. In March, Town Council adopted a resolution directing the Planning Commission to begin preparing the documents needed to implement a development impact fee. During the October meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the four items required by state law to implement an impact fee. These items are the Development Impact Fee Study, a Housing Affordability Study, a Capital Improvements Plan, and a Development Impact Fee Ordinance. I make a motion for first reading approval to adopt the Town of Lexington Development Impact Fee Study, Housing Affordability Study, Capital Improvements Plan, and Development Impact Fee Ordinance, and also in agreement with the spirit of cooperation that Pastor Gregg prayed for this evening, direct staff to set up a meeting with all of the stakeholders involved so that we can hash out any differences there may be, and just have a meeting of the minds.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carons seconds that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams.
I'd like to thank the Planning Commission, some of the members who are here, for spending their time working on this. I know there's a lot of time put in and thought put into it by those guys and ladies, and I appreciate y'all's efforts and work on this.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle, the Clark House Reimbursement Resolution. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Clark House Restoration and Related Parking Improvements Project is expected to be ready for bid in late 2019. In order to have maximum flexibility in financing initial construction costs, IRS regulations allow bond issuers to adopt a reimbursement resolution in order to recoup costs for capital expenditures incurred prior to the issuance of bonds or bond anticipation notes, BANs. Accordingly, the town should have a resolution in place for the project. The town's Bond Council will draft the appropriate resolution as a first step in the overall financing plans for the project. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for approval of the reimbursement resolution for the Clark House Restoration and Related Parking Improvements Project.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manis seconds a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into announcements. We'll hear announcements from Councilmember Todd Carons for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start off and wish a happy birthday to the guy with the best name on council, Mr. Todd Lyle, who celebrated his birthday this past Saturday, and he's also a veteran, attended our Veterans Day Parade with us on Sunday. So happy birthday, old man. Thank you for your service. As the mayor mentioned, we have multiple upcoming events at Ice House Amphitheater. Hope everyone will continue to come out and enjoy the multiple events there. We have a long list of meetings coming up here at the town because we're very busy, have a lot going on. These are available on our website, but just to buzz through, our Board of Zoning will be meeting here in council chambers on Thursday at 5:30. Our Board of Apairance will meet on the 12th at 9:00. The Traffic Committee will meet here on the 13th at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room. And Virginia Hilton Park Committee, which is a committee, that's your volunteer committee, correct, Ms. Livingston, will meet here on Thursday at 6:00 in the Conference Room C. Let's see, there's two Movies in the Park, Toy Story on the 8th and Aladdin on the 22nd. Both movies start at 6:00, and Town Hall will be closed on Monday, the 11th for Veterans Day. We encourage you guys to thank the veterans for their service in our community. Had a great turnout for our parade. We appreciate everybody who cooperated and participated in that. Let's see, council will meet again on November 18th at 6:00 PM for council's November work session in the Eli Mac Room. Also want to note that multiple of our members will be traveling to the National League of Cities City Summit here in just a few weeks, and it's a national conference where our very own Councilmember Manis will end her second term as second vice president, and we're looking forward to seeing her elected as first vice president of the National League of Cities. And so that will be upcoming. Hopefully, something we'll celebrate here in about a month. Finally, Town Hall will also be closed on November 28th and 29th in observance of Thanksgiving, and we want to continue to pray and uplift the Baker family with Steve's wife Julie and her continued health and getting better. And then as we finish here, looking forward to Thanksgiving, I just want to say we do live in one of the greatest towns in the greatest nation in the world, and so we all spend a lot of our time problem-solving in our day jobs here on council and our committees. Life's full of problem-solving. And in the midst of a lot of problem-solving, it's easy to forget about Thanksgiving. So encourage everybody to pause the problem-solving and be thankful for the things that are right. There's always things that are wrong, but I for one am very thankful for our town, our nation, and the good things that God has provided. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Carons. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
I think we need to keep thinking about our clerk Becky, who had back surgery on Friday, and she is at home recuperating. We look forward to getting her back, but Karen's doing a fine job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Manis. Anyone else? Very good. Any questions from the news media tonight? Any public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to add? We didn't get to hear from anybody at the Boy Scout Troop 507, so if the leader wants to come back up and talk about the Boy Scout Troop a little bit, we'd love to hear about it. to come back up and talk about the Boy Scout Troop a little bit, we'd love to hear about what y'all are doing. Come on, don't be shy. Come on up. You got a great group of young men there. We're proud of them.
A little unscripted, but appreciate you having us tonight. The boys here are working on the citizenship and community merit badge. This is one of the requirements to come and to the meeting, and then we'll talk a little bit afterwards about what they've heard and some of the topics that were discussed. So we've been working on this for a couple of weeks, and we're excited to be kind of wrapping it up in the next week or two, and then they'll move on to some other things. We have a lot of our newer scouts, so they certainly appreciate your visit to the PAC last year.
Yes, sir.
And we have our older scouts here as well, so we appreciate the opportunity to be here with you guys tonight.
Good. Thank you for being here. Sir, would you like to come forward, say anything? I appreciate y'all being here tonight. You're representing a different PAC, I believe.
Yeah. We're glad you came tonight. Thank you for coming. Very good. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, November 4th, 2019. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week, and a video will be available on the town's website at lexse.com. Without objection, we are adjourned.